Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of August 18, 6:00 PM, starting at 6:02 in the senior center. Since there are four of us, we have a quorum. We don't have anybody online. Do we? Can we waive the reading? Okay, do we have a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Yeah, second. Great, thank you very much. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of waiving the meeting?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. No, any names? No questions asked. Our next up, we have a series of administrative items. The first will be, and we could move these all, but I assume that we have somebody for Parkside, so let's go ahead and break them up. So Parkside subdivision to accept the surety bond and release lots in Red Hawk Lane. Is there anything that you would like to say?
I think we've got everything together. Your bond, I think we're ready to go.
Okay.
And just say that it's been a pleasure working with the board.
Great, thank you. I appreciate the work that you're doing. Looks like things are coming together over there. I've noticed that a number of cars are using this space where the park at the sidewalk is going to be. I don't know if you've been there during a Yes.
Haven't been down, down there when they got the park just going.
Yeah, so it'll be interesting to see once the sidewalks go in.
And that's something that the people who worked about it wants to talk to you about.
About?
The sidewalk. Because there's concern of some of the grading there.
Okay.
And, but it's probably for not to be in.
Oh, okay. All right. So do, will they talk to us? Do they talk to?
I'm wait, I'm waiting for them to send you guys a letter.
Okay.
They asked us until they put in the sidewalk.
Okay.
Until they vetted something out, so.
Okay, I appreciate that heads up. So. I'm just making myself a note. Okay, so Emily, what do we need to do?
We need to vote to accept the bond and release the lots.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, say it again?
Accept the bond.
Accept the bond and release the lot. There we go. For, for the Parkside subdivision, the lots specifically on Red Hawk Lane.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to take care of this. Would anybody, is there any discussion? Here, none. I'll call for, roll call votes. I'll call for votes. All those in favor?
Aye. We have been online now.
Oh, yes. Hi, Wayne. Oh, okay. Hi, Wayne.
Hi, folks.
Are you? Okay, so now that he's here, do we need to read into the minutes? Yes, okay. All right, Wayne, give us just a second. We need to read into the minutes, the, the meeting notice information.
Great.
Do you want to take care of that?
I'll take care of it. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023 and as amended as of March 28, 2025, this meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy by remote meetings in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated in technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so by using this login information on the agenda or visiting the local scene dot media slash Duxbury for information about the program.
Thank you. All right, so Wayne, we were just, there's a motion on the floor to accept the surety bond and release lots on Red Hawk Lane and Parkside subdivision. Does anybody have any questions or is there any discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that there was some question. I think this is the one with the land swap or something, and there was some consternation about it. But I don't think it would hit barrel on this question. It's just something that's in the air on this one.
In the air.
Yeah, there was a square parcel. It was somewhere in the middle of this, is my understanding. That was a conservation parcel and was supposed to bring that. This is probably all water under the bridge now. Yeah, so I'm sorry to bring it up.
No, it was a land swap and we traded off a separate parcel that that's under the conservation restriction. So that was done four, five years ago.
Yeah.
So that parcel is not developed right because of the box turtle. So in fact, correct?
No, this part, well, the Union Street, the Union Street parcel that A W Perry owned, which we swapped for this parcel.
Okay.
Does have a conservation restriction. It's part of the conservation management permit. And we've already done everything we need to do on that one.
Okay, okay. Do you have any other questions, Ty?
No question.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing, none. I'll call for roll call vote. Starting with Wayne online, please.
I, Wayne Dennison.
Hi, Lawrence Rory.
Governor Ryan.
Hi, Kristen Rapp.
Steve Kenney.
All right, motion carries. I guess that's it. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So if you hang tight, I think we have to sign something for you.
I don't have it here today. You guys are gonna have to come into the office.
Okay.
I'll have that. Exactly.
Yeah, it's not the plan. I've got your message different.
Show important, they would go.
I'll get it. We gotta do it.
Okay, yeah, thanks. All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
All right, next up is CBA case 2025-0866 Elder Brewster Street. Do we have anybody here on the call present?
Yep. Hi, it's all of Maryland's okay. How you doing? So, I don't have any, I do have to win. I don't do. There's some architectural renderings. Share those. So this is at the end of Elder Brewster. Elder Brewster's to the south. It's on the water in the ocean, faces the, on the east side. Single family home. They're looking to add a 13 by 14 foot screen porch on the deck back. Reconfiguring the pool and doing some patio work there. It's a pre-existing non-performing lot. Required 40,000 square feet, only have 12,000 inadequate frontage, multiple building setbacks, and also lot coverage. So the level in the district is 15%. We're allowed to go up to 17% through the additional amendment from the, because the lot is undersized. We're at 22%. We'll then to add 1% to that. So that's a special permit through zoning. We've been through design review. We've been through conservation, heaven order of conditions. And that's about it.
All right, so we'll, we'll provide comments and then we can vote to recommend or not recommend to the CBA. But it's opt, it's actually the CBA that will make the decision.
Sure.
But I know that I had a couple of questions for you. On the application, the owner's address and owner's email address is not listed. So you just might make, recommend to them that they have to add that to the application.
Okay.
And.
They owe the own, the owner, okay, that's right. Because I think we went through the, I think we went through the architect as the applicant, right?
I think has the property.
Oh, does?
Yeah.
Am I maybe thinking of the other one? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, scratch that.
Okay.
I did have a question, though. I noticed it in the rendering, and I know this isn't the final, that it looks like it's covered and it has some framing. Is it, do they ever intend to make it a three season, a three season room? Like, screen it in?
It is a screen porch. It's a proposed screen porch.
It is a proposed screen.
Yes. Right, yeah. That's what, yes, Liam, that's a proposed screen porch or existing deck.
Okay. Got one. All right, any, anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Wayne, do you have any questions?
I was interested in this notion that you get to go to 17%. I, I understand that the, to go in to 17% is just a function of the discretion of the zoning board. But you're already over 17%. So why are we talking about what everybody calls about the 3% rule irrespective of the fact it doesn't apply?
So I believe it's, it might be by right, the 7, so the 17% is, so I'll read it for you, the in residential compatibility district, building coverage as defined in section 302 shall be, shall be no more than the 15% of the total lot area. Except that in case a lot having an area less than 20,000 square feet.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt you. But I am the chair of the zoning board and, and I fully understand that the zoning board can in fact permit the additional 3%, but that's discretionary. And quite frankly, I don't even think it is implicated by your application. That, that's my question.
I'm sorry, we're, we're over the 17%, so we're.
That, that's why we shouldn't be talking about the 17%. If you started at 21 and you want to go to some other number, the, the 3% rule has no application whatsoever.
Oh, yes, I understand that. I was merely pointing the fact out that this lot does fall into that caveat. It doesn't for us because we're over the percentage, but I didn't want somebody to make this, make the.
All right, candidly, I'll, I'll see it again. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else have any questions or thoughts? Do we, I'll entertain a motion to defer this to the CBA?
So moved.
Okay, second. Do we, does any, do we want to add anything about defer with any changes? Okay. All right, so any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a roll call vote on deferring this to the CBA. I'll start with Wayne.
Wayne Dennison abstain.
Lawrence, all right, aye.
Governor Ryan.
Kristen Rapp, aye.
Steve Kenney, aye. Matthew Ray, aye.
Okay, this will be deferred to the CBA. Thank you.
Very much.
All right, next up is CBA case 2025-11126 Tremont Street. Do we have anybody online for this one? All right, this is the one where it's missing the owner's address, email address, and then the architect's email address too. So I would, I was going to suggest that they add that.
They're gonna be filing a slave plan review for this one with you guys eventually. We haven't received it yet.
Okay. All right, thanks. Would you maybe just let them know if they reach out to you? If not, what we're gonna.
Yeah, they already know.
Okay.
I think they're holding out.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Next up, any, we'll discuss the, the minutes of July 28. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none, we'll call for a roll call vote, starting with Wayne.
Wayne Dennison, aye.
Lawrence Rory, aye.
Governor Ryan.
Kristen Rapp, aye.
Steve Kenney, aye. Matthew Ray, aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, PP administrative. Do we have any thing that we need to talk about as far as administrative details?
Much, pretty so.
Okay.
And this is inappropriate by all means. I, I mentioned in previously conversation with Matt that days passed, the planning board, like the historically, had a practice to walk around the property. And, you know, may or may not be booked depending on circumstances, but it was pretty common to be done. And then sometime in the last few years, that practice was suspended. And so then I'd like to make a formal request that it be reinstated.
Sure, we can do that. Do you have any properties in mind that you'd like to do?
Anything that's before us.
Okay.
I mean, it was fortunate that, as we were looking at this on leave today, there was an announced, well, run by the state, I would say, to attend that. But only because I was notified by a select board member, so. You know, planning board hasn't seen this.
Right. Yes. Yes, I did talk about that with Matthew, and it was, let's hold on to that. Yeah. Okay. Any thoughts on that? Anybody have any?
It sounds like a great idea, Ty. Yeah, all in favor.
Okay.
I am all in favor.
I think it would definitely help.
Yeah.
My only request would be for like early morning or late afternoon.
Yeah, we used to do them at five because that way people had a shot to get there.
Yeah.
But it's tough in the winter.
Okay. All right, let's keep this, let's keep this in mind and just help getting back into the habit, just to help to remind us if we forget, and some of that will be dependent on how quickly we receive information.
Yeah, it's always a time.
So we'll work on that, too. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on for number two and number three, conceptual plans for Zero Street. Zero Keen Street subdivision, McFarland Farms discussion. We don't have any information. We're going to defer that to the next meeting. Number four is zoning by law amendment recommendations from the coastal resiliency task force. And if you look in your packet of documents that Emily provided you, there is a red line version of section 402 flood hazards overlay district from the zoning by law. And the coastal resiliency task force. The president, that was somebody from Woods Hole, who provided some texts, some wrecking tactical wetlands and flood overlay districts and so on, and recommended some changes, some updates to the bylaw. Apparently, we, back in 2021, we'd actually, we'd actually had it by law approved and updated by law approved at town meeting. So we were pretty close to what they had reckoned, what Woods Hole was recommending. And the president, Lenora, went through and she added a few things that were not included, and that's what we see in red. So if you look on page four, page eight, page nine, those are the changes that the coastal resiliency task force has recognized, recognized. So we thought we would bring it here because I think technically the, the planning board is the one that's responsible for any of those recommendations from the coastal resiliency task force. So we thought we were, wanted to make sure that everybody here took a look at it, take a look at it today. And then maybe in two weeks, we can vote on whether or not we would want to forward this, whether we want to recommend or not recommend it. So for today, are there any questions that we thought about this?
The one question I had when reading through the email, it looks like these sections were inadvertently deleted as part of the 2021 amendment?
Yeah, no.
That's the way I read the email.
Yeah. And I think it was more that there was something that was already proposed.
Okay.
And then that got passed about the same time that Woods Hole recommended this other piece. So it was like, it's like the year was the thing, that that's why it was confusing.
Okay.
So that's, that's the way I interpreted it.
Okay.
Did that make sense?
Yeah, I had originally read the email that some of this language was in, and then when they mirrored the Woods Hole inadvertently, like they, they wanted to mirror the Woods Hole language, and by doing so inadvertently may have deleted some existing language. That's the way I read it, but I, I may not be right on that.
Yeah, I think you're right, because it talks about, and the mission occurred when the town acted in May of 2021, deleting the 2019 version of section 402 in its entirety for replacing it with this adjusted by law.
Oh, okay, so they probably just.
I think it was, it seemed like it was inadvertently, so this language was, was in there in the 2019, and then when they did the amendment, it changed, and they deleted in its entirety and didn't keep some of these provisions.
Right, and now she's.
Put it back in, that used to be in there.
So one of my questions would be, would there, would it have been an error not a omission, but like, was there a? Right.
Yeah.
Emily, is there any way?
I don't think all of that information was already there. I think some of the suggestions are in. That's, that's, I can't remember, but yeah. I can look in my files from.
We have a copy of the older version.
Yeah, yeah, because we had, we asked Lenora to go back and compare the old with the new and then suggested changes. But I think it would just be helpful to make sure that this language wasn't in there and taken out for a reason, and not just because of an error. Matt, do you deal with any, or Lawrence, do you deal with any of six, seven, or eight, any of your work?
I do not.
But then I need eight, nine.
Yeah, it's really the explicit inclusion of line, that said, and the utilization of that. Worked, tends to be straightforward.
Is there anybody else that we should ask to review this or make a recommendation? Like Pat Brennan or somebody like that?
You mean for these particular changes to the flood plan?
Yeah, like somebody, like how to just make sure that we have maybe a, somebody who's familiar with flood planes and things like that take as like a test.
So I think my impression is that these changes are mainly, in fact, I talked with her in the last week, I think it was last week, coming from Littoral White. And it seems as though she's, this is kind of her expertise, well, she's you know, worked for years as a weatherman scientist and flood plan person, so forth. So I mean, I guess it can hurt to check with somebody else, but it doesn't really seem necessary to me. It seems like she knows this stuff sort of inside.
She does. She's thinking it might be helpful to have a third party validate it.
I mean, I mean, obviously, the town council, otherwise, I'm not, I mean, if we do, if we do that, we'd probably have to pay them. I have to. I mean, maybe we could persuade Pat Brennan to kind of do it for reasons. He does so much work for us, but.
Well, I think if we need him to do a review and it costs money, I think that's just part of doing business, so I'm not worried about that. I just, I'm like, do you know if that's something that would be, we typically would do?
I'm not sure if he's ever reviewed by law for us.
Yeah, probably, I'm sure we'd find somebody else who might be, Lawrence, a specialist.
All right, well, why don't we, does anybody have any questions? Well, let's take a look, see what you think, and maybe we can, we can talk about this again in two weeks, so if you want to.
Yeah, I think we've got plenty of time. I mean, but it's my understanding is the plan is to kind of to try to pass this the, the next town meeting in March. And we'll, we'll probably need to, you know, get some text into the, into the warrant, the draft warrant by November or December, I assume. I don't know exactly what it works here, but, or maybe to late October. But, you know, it can always, it can then be tweaked further along, you know, providing you make a huge change, you can tweak it further in the process of, right up to town meeting. So I think we've got plenty of time to, if we want to check with some other consultants, somebody to lead. I mean, to be honest, I guess flip to the board if they want to. To be honest, I don't, I don't feel like it's really necessary. But it's, it's your decision. I mean, I think as far as like what happened back in 2021 or 2012, whatever, when that, when somehow the verbiage got lost or, or maybe accidentally deleted, or there was confusion of two separate things. I got the impression Lenora has already kind of tried to figure out what happened and she wasn't, either she didn't succeed or I don't understand the, the emails. Either way, I don't, I think it might be difficult to try to go back in the, in the records and figure out why it happened. Might be kind of, might be kind of hard.
I was thinking that the, the planning board would have had to present it, so there was probably some discussion. So perhaps in the, the meeting minutes leading up to the board's approval of this. Maybe Emily's around, Wayne, maybe, would you go back and take a look for us?
Yeah, I can look at that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Let me try and understand your concern. Just that if we intentionally remove this, you don't want unattention.
Yes. Because I just want to make sure that there wasn't a, if in fact somebody was removed for a reason, I just want to make sure we don't put it back without having that intention. And if it was just a mistake, well, then that'll be used. Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, next up, comments to select board in mass hearing. We'll discuss the Villas at Keenbrook, 40B, 934 Temple Street. Not here for that. Is there anybody here for that? 934 Temple Street, no. All right, so did everybody have a chance to review, to begin to review the information that was sent to us? It's in our packet regarding 404. This was received by the select board, or there was a letter, it's like, or in July 21st. And so they requested, they had a month for comments, and so those comments are due by Friday. So if we have anything we'd like to say, that could be in the time to do that.
I think it requested extension, which was granted to the comment period. I don't know how long since it is.
Where was, do you know that?
Yeah. Because of the tight timing, requested that be additional time for comments so that they would have time to process any input from us before they did.
Okay, okay. I would want more time so that we can process too, but.
So we have a little.
How much time we have?
I think not.
Okay.
Do you have any information on that?
No, that's, that's new to me.
No, because I watched the select board.
I mean, I guess if that should happen, then it must be true, but either way, I think we'd want to, we'd want to ideally get our comments into them within the next few days, so to give them more time, if they need more time to assemble everything and so forth. I'm sure other boards and departments are going to be weighing in as well. And they probably want the additional time to try to assemble it all together and extend it and make it to one document.
I would say if you have comments, comments from those departments by August 21st, so that the select board can talk about it on Monday.
Oh, that's right.
All right. So in the, in the future, whenever we get anything we'd like, just make sure it's on the agenda as soon as possible.
Yeah, it was just a while until we have our next.
Yeah.
Pick out.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. All right, so any comments? So this is the 40B. It looks, Wayne, you could probably speak to this more than we can. Does anybody have any comments at first glance? Diagnose?
I mean, I live, I live in close proximity to it, and, you know, I'd rather see a development like this with single family homes with, you know, the required number of affordable units in there than a big, you know, 300 unit apartment complex. So I thought, you know, I, I had, I had admitted that I hadn't gone through all the requested exemptions that there. But at first glance on the plans and the, and the conceptual plans, and they, it looked okay. It'd be interesting if they'll be able to, the attractiveness of that project so close to the highway. Yeah, right, and some, on this plan, some of these, but these proposed lots are but right at, right at.
That's a problem.
Yeah, yes. I, I did notice, I just take a look at the development budget, and I noticed the, the hard cost contingency that they had in that, in the development budget, it's only 3.3% of the hard cost. That's remarkably low, my, in my experience.
It's very low. I do a lot of construction, commercial construction findings, representing lenders, and none of my lenders would, would, would.
We would not.
Approve a 3.3 contingency.
We, we have trouble doing five.
Yeah.
One, we're against five. We don't see ten. So, yeah. So I, if there was somebody here, I'd like to ask what the rationale was for that low hard cost contingency. The problem is, of course, if they run into, run into overages, they blew through that contingency very quickly, and then all of a sudden you've got a sources and uses challenge that you you know, difficulty overcoming. Then development might be willing to defer fee to make up the balance. Again, I would ask the developer that. I was hoping to do that if someone was here. But that's, that's a key question I had.
All right, one thing I, I guess I could mention, and I really just mentioned this to one or two people, but that I believe the developer of this project is basically Stonebridge. They call it Stonebridge, based in Eastern or something, and they've done, I mean, there's an LLC, but I think, it's basically Stonebridge, I believe. And they did a few projects in Pembroke, including, I think, a project that I believe was a 40B. It's, it's just basically kind of a bunch of single family, you know, like a subdivision of single family houses on roughly kind of quarter acre lots or so. And it's only, it's actually only, I think it's called Copperwood, Copperwood Road. It's only about a mile over the Duxbury border, you know, right, and kind of sat this Pembroke. So, you know, anybody can sort of check it out if you're curious to see what they, what they built in the recent past. It was just built kind of five or six, seven years ago.
Thank you, Matthew.
Yeah, well, my concerns, you know, not as versed, obviously, in the finances and the realities. I look at it from land use and practicality perspective and comments about the lots directly abutting the highway are highly relevant. And then on the other side, you've got development in 100 foot wetlands buffer, so it's to me, it's problematic, but I understand 40B, and there's not much we can do about that. One of the things, in terms of the highway, there's two, I believe there are two very strong reasons to encourage the state and developer work together to mitigate the negative impacts on both human health and on the environment. So in terms of human health, we know, it's been documented, that you know, living in close proximity to busy roads is a health hazard, asthma, you know, other problems. That's a known fact. So, you know, I don't know what mechanism is available to us under the comprehensive permanent statute, but I think we should make that case very strongly that there should not be residences directly abutting the highway. And one remedy for this could be to allocate strip of land, 75 feet or something like that, and specifically restricted, put a conservation restricted on it, ensure that it remains undeveloped, any defense at all. So that, that would, you know, you can access it, it would remain a wildlife order. This is the other primary concern that I have. If you look at the topography in this part of the world, this is, because of the construction, you know, free. this is because of the construction, it isolated the habitat to the left. And this landmass, you know, sits in the headwaters of the South River, it's a very sensitive spot. It's surrounded essentially on two sides by water and conservation land is because the bottom part, most of wet conservation. So the effect of constructing from the highway to the wetland will be to isolate the conservation land at the southern extreme, extremity of this area. And so an isolated patch of wild land is essentially useless. It's just a mini brain and disappear over time. Because it doesn't have traversal and occupation by animals. It's the animals that keep the forest healthy. Now, this is a little more esoteric and maybe not a matter of comprehensive permit, but it bears on this question of what use of the land and the layout of the property. Now, we have in our bylaws a very well structured, you know, the the conservation cluster concept, and we have other forty B's in town that have been constructed using this model. And such a model, you would reduce the lot sizes. You could keep the same number of houses, but you create conservation lands and concentrate the development in the center of the parcel. And if such a technique was taken here, it would alleviate both the wetland concerns on the west side and the human health and the and the wildlife concerns on the right side. So I I hope that there's a way that the planning board of the town in some way can encourage the developer, the state, but taking into consideration these factors.
So Ted, I think I have some questions about what you said. So if this is Route three here on the east, and then you said, which was conservation.
The south is the Ducksbury, you have a ton of Ducksbury Conservation Parcel.
And then off to the left.
On the South River.
So then what's, what's, you said that this will get cut off, will it get cut off on the west? What's here to the west side?
Well, the west is, it's the river. So you have you know, a recharge, the headwaters, the South Rivers is the source. So all the pollution comes out of it. And that's the other piece of the subject that that is put into the ground here is inevitably going to end up in South River.
So if you, if you could design something with the cluster conservation cluster that you had in mind, what would that look like? I mean, just just like roughly.
Yeah, well, I think I understand in terms of, as I went in the domain, you know, and I I idealized or optimal layout for a new community like this, would it include some community green space at the center with the residents is around? Ideally, the green space would be at the back and the road would be around the outside in this, in a layout like this. But that's two roads. So I think you end up with the road in the middle and you lose the green spaces. But I mean, you want to make provisions, you know, for the residents to have some open space. That's my other concern here is this is, you know, it's extremely dense and it's wall to wall. So there really isn't any, any public or shared space in this layout, you know, which isn't, isn't ideal.
Lauren, do you have any thoughts?
I do. I have a couple of questions. I I kind of echo your especially the the wetlands and really the septic. It doesn't really seem like some of these lots will have enough room to get the septic on there with the proper leaching fields. But then kind of flipping completely over, the last two paragraphs in the note here mentions that there are twenty five percent affordable housing, right? So seven units, but the last paragraph mentions that Ducksbury will be given a preference for up to seventy percent. Does that mean that we can choose more than seven?
Seventy percent of the affordable units.
Okay.
So seventy percent of the seven.
Okay, so five of them would be dedicated to Ducksbury residents.
Okay, all right. Is there any way that we can kind of force meeting our numbers since we're not meeting the forty B? So can we force more than twenty five percent?
Well, I think to ex, to elaborate, to extract, to go further on that question, then we could have more units and then have more, have more overall units and have more affordable units too.
Yeah, I don't want more units.
I can't find saying how it works too. Yeah, there's a density bonus.
Yes.
More density and then you can go up twenty five percent.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think I think you can't, you really can't force them. I mean, there might be some situations where it kind of comes up in negotiations, perhaps if 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 the town has leveraged something. But I think in general, you definitely can't force them to go any higher than twenty five percent and they'd be extremely reluctant to do so since it relates so much to their profitability or ability to break even. I guess the one thing to mention, and some of you probably aware of this, is that I I believe if a forty B project is is rental, then even even though only twenty five percent of them have to be affordable, the town actually gets credit for all of them. It's kind of strange. But I don't think there's any way that we can force them or even persuade them to make a project rental as opposed to ownership. So again, we're kind of stuck with that.
And Lauren, to your point about, I think what we can do, I think what we have an opportunity as a planning board is to list out like here that here are the questions we have. Here are the things that we'd like to see. Is there a way you can the zoning board or the select board can can negotiate or talk through or ask them to add? Wayne, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I I don't. I I'm gonna have to reserve on this one for obvious reasons. Because of the fact that it's a forty B, almost all of the permitting, including some of the conservation commissions, otherwise things that would go to the conservation commission or from the sewer and water commission come now through the ZBA. So any recommendations that people would like to make around those issues, I I think will be very, very much appreciated. That said, I I'm not prepared to comment on this at this point.
Thank you, Wayne. So I'll I'll share my thoughts. So a couple of years ago, Chris, I think the owner of this property must have met with Chris Ryan and they, the owner owners. And they came up and Chris actually said, you know, here's this property, you know, there's some, actually, there's some opportunity. Right? You can do this cul-de-sac street with these houses and get as many as you want in or but there's actually an opportunity to do some green space. So if we say, for example, if there was a roadway around the edge, that might take away, put more of a buffer. You did the roadway around the edge and you put the houses in between and you put green space in the middle. So essentially, if you were burdened, so you put the garages in the backside. There there are ways or to to create more of a more clustering, more community. You could have the same amount of development. You could have more of the buffer, you could have shared green space. You could have that buffer between the properties and the highway. So there are other, like city planning, architectural things that we can do. This is just typically what we see.
Yeah, and I I did speak with the principal, someone from the the local organization. You know, and it seemed pretty clear that they were interested in, in, you know, making this compatible with Ducksbury, you know, meeting our portable objectives. So they may well be interested in in participating in that kind of conversation, but as we know, just because it's cost. So I I think it's in our interest to have a very concrete, specific proposal to move that.
Well, one idea when I had looking at this, it was interesting because I looked at the first picture I actually looked at was just was the single family houses with the two hundred feet of frontage. And I was like, oh, okay, this works, right? And then I looked at this one, okay, right. But then I thought, well, what, some of what gets added are these pipe stem lots in the back, which we don't really see much of in Ducksbury. But if there were somehow, there was some benefit to the to creating some open space or common space back there, then that could provide some buffer between that and the highway. If it was a playground or soccer field, you know, something kind of like that. I'm sort of thinking, trying to, I think a little bit more out of the box of what we typically have an opportunity to see. I I don't know. I was just trying to think about more, more open space and more of a buffer there. One thing I couldn't figure out was the one thing I would ask them to do, they probably are not required to do, is to add sidewalks. Got a thousand one year fee, got a sidewalk on both sides, or at least one side that would.
Yeah, I bet.
Pardon?
Sorry to jump in. But yeah, I think especially for something like sidewalks, I would imagine that the ZVA could could probably sort of put some pressure on them to 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 be to do that. I mean, that's just, that's such a small thing. It seems like it would be so beneficial. You know, we're not talking about a three or four lot, so we're talking about a lot of, a lot of houses. It just seems like it makes so much sense to put sidewalks, at least on one side, not on both sides of the of the road. And I think the ZVA could probably put a little pressure on them and persuade them to do it if they're not already proposing it. I guess also thinking, I mean, definitely I agree with with what you were saying, Ted, about the the houses that are right on the edge of Route three, basically. And Kristen, when you talk about a buffer, were you referring to that area? I mean, it seems like it might make sense to have, if there is a buffer, you know, or maybe it could even be like the roads stop, like, you know, have a buffer in the road like along that part of Route three. So at least, you know, nobody's house is actually backing up to Route. I mean, some of these ones, it looks like, you know, the distance from the actual house to the to their cars going seventy thousand, that would only be like maybe thirty or forty meters. So like, then obviously there's a right of way. So, you know, Route three is not quite on the edge, but still, it's really close.
It's really close. And I haven't seen this done so much here. But when you go farther into the city, you might have sound barriers put up against the highway.
Yeah.
I I asked him about that and he said they would put in a ten foot cedar fence.
Cedar, cedar fence.
So if if I could make a suggestion, to the extent that the planning board looks at this and would like to see anything different about this plan or anything modified about this plan, I think the notion that we're just going to rely on the zoning board to figure it all out, let's not do that. I'd much prefer that we were clear cut at the planning level as to what we would ask the zoning board to do. And if we can do that, then I think that it's extraordinarily beneficial because there's a, there's a very difficult permitting process. It's there are a lot of moving pieces on every one of these projects. And if the planning board has priorities with respect to this build out, I think the planning board ought to clearly state what those priorities are and make some recommendations.
Wayne, would we did that in a list, a bullet list, would that be helpful?
Yes.
I I I agree with that.
Yeah, maybe we can, we'd be, Emily and I could work on like a memorandum, a draft memorandum tomorrow and send it to you. Or just just to avoid a quorum, but to send it to you, Kristen. And you could sort of take a look and see what you think and we can get it to the town attorney's office by Friday.
I think that's a great idea. Why don't we go ahead and list all the bullet points that we'd like to see incorporated? So it sounds like the first one is the the cost.
The, if you get the the hard cost contingencies.
Increase the hard cost contingency too.
At least five percent. Yeah, preferably ten percent.
So respectfully, I I I think you can send it to, you could send it to to three board members without getting to a quorum issue. And three of the board members who have weighed in here very thoughtfully are tag Stephen and Kristen. I don't mean to diminish the the input of anybody else, but candidly, I'd be perfectly comfortable if we got to a memo that those three board members were comfortable with. But that's, that's my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's true. It couldn't certainly be three people, yeah.
Well, let's keep adding here. Yeah, so so no residents, our our preference would be no residents abutting the highway. There's concern about septic to wetlands. So how would you, Lauren and Ted, how would you recommend that we raise that?
Well, I mean, there's a couple of things going on. We didn't really touch on, I believe that you know, as as a, essentially a wet parcel. I'm not sure if this is in VA pod. What is the zoning that is it actually sitting in?
I thought it was.
Well, so the, you know, the, obviously, the concern is the septic. You've got an area that requires sixty thousand per septic.
Tag, it's in the residential.
It's not the overlay though.
Hold on, let me look here. It does say wetland protection overlay district.
Wet.
And then aquifer protection overlay district.
Yeah, well, that's the one that triggers the six foot requirement. So we're going from, you know, Ducksbury standard of ample percalable land to this dissipate septic load probably the other way to, you know, a higher concentration. And with the small lot sizes, it doesn't seem feasible to put individual septic systems. So I think in order for this to not severely negative the impact or over in the South River, it needs to have a shared septic or maybe one or two or three, depending on design. And and the design of that system would need to be such so that it did not present the same load as if it was laid out this way. It would have to present the load of conformance with the APOD, as if there were sixty thousand. I don't know how to do that math, not that type of an engineer. But there are very specific percentages and calculations that are done and are decided and set the parameters of the septic system. And I, you know, this was also raised at the select board meeting. I think it's probably, in my view, the most vital issue. I'm very concerned about the residents abutting the highway and I think that should also be addressed, but this impacts, you know, the whole town and.
Ted, I'm sorry. What do you say, APOD? What does that mean?
Aquifer protection. Yeah, so that's, I mean, having said, I said, you see for many years, you know, this is always a serious concern. So it seems like a higher, I would put that at the top of the priorities.
How would you all raise that?
I think that they should be able to present a purpose and then an engineering plan with septic layout pretty easily at this point.
To make sure that it would work.
It's fit and sized properly for each house.
And the calculations.
The calculations.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Emily. And then definitely add a, add some type of a buffer, a a green buffer, not a six foot. How about a green, a green fence, cedar fence with a green fence? And some trees.
Green, green space, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, probably some, some type of a, a physical barrier.
Like an arrobaide along with the fence.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. So physical barrier with a physical fence with a green fence is in a evergreen fence. Um, I'm gonna, I'll go back through and see if I can dig out the drawings that Chris had. Oh, and then add sidewalks.
Can we add sidewalks on Temple Street too?
Pardon?
On Temple Street and the two lots that are on Temple.
Oh, yeah, great idea. There's probably a sidewalk on the bridge, right? So it tied. Any other thoughts as opposed is for the layout the way as they are right now? Lots, pipe stems.
I I will say, it looks like they have the affordability units fairly well distributed throughout the site. They're not, they don't seem to be clustered in one particular location. They don't seem to be clustered along the, near the border of Route three. So I don't think we need to change anything there. That's just a comment. Deciding a thing.
There's a lot of designations on this, but obviously you can see the tag already made a reference to the hundred foot weather bump. The three red dashed lines, I was trying to find out what they were designated there. They didn't seem any notes on the plan. Yeah, it's on the second page.
Oh, I I don't, I even print that one.
So the bordering vegetated wetlands is the left most line.
Yeah.
Fifty foot buffers in the middle and one hundred foot wetlands buffers to the right. And you're not supposed to build within the hundred. Most of the houses are within the hundred. Again, an argument for a resident conservation cost.
All right, so if we if Emily and Matthew put together a memo and then three of us look at it and then we send it back to you, can we, we can send it to the whole group and ask them for comments sent to you, correct?
I don't believe that's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I think technically, I guess like if I send it to the whole group and they only send their their comments to me, I don't know, it seems like it's still, it's still, um, would be deliberations.
Yeah.
Uh, even though, I mean, I guess they're they're not, they're not sharing it with each other. Uh, it's only going to me. So that's, that's a gray area.
Okay, no, I I.
I wish I could give you a better answer.
No, no, I I understand, I understand where Wayne's going with that. I get that. All right, so we'll, um.
And if you want to be completely safe about it, you have to send a direct message to an individual.
Well, even there, like, if it's, if it's clearly, if the intent is clearly to get around the open meeting law, then I think it's still.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's not trying to get around it. We don't have a meeting before Friday, so we'll we'll work within those parameters. That's fine.
Oh, so who are the three? I guess the suggestion was send it to to Christian, um, Tag, and I don't know how you guys feel.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other thoughts?
A quick flash, yeah, comment, I guess, for somebody who's done this recently in my professional life. There is normally a ugly plan and a better plan that you actually want to go with. This kind of seems like the ugly plan.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
I don't know if there's a way that we can phrase that.
Like ask for the plan, like ask for the landscaping plan maybe or something.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I don't mean like, like physically, I mean, there there's probably another plan that reduces the amount of homes on it that looks, that works better.
But they expect us to ask for it.
Yes, that they'll get to, they have it already in their back pocket.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You mean, kind of like the, in a sense, sort of the negush?
Yeah.
The negush, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
This point is their wish list and their contingency is the back.
Yeah. I'm not sure if we can ask for, I'm not sure if we can ask for them to show us that at this point in time.
Can we ask them to go back to the drawing board?
But yeah.
Something better?
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, it's, uh, maybe something, something along those lines.
Uh, and what if, what if we said the ch- the planning board challenges them? About with a better, better plan. They've got some opportunity here to do something special, not just, uh, not just what they have here on paper so far.
Yeah, I guess if I, if I come across the old drawings, that's kind of a long shot. I have no idea where they would be. But if if I do come across those old drawings, that Chris Ryan had very stretched for them, or that had been discussed, then, yeah, I can take a look at that and see what that consisted out. It could be, it could be either attached to the the memo, or it could be in reference in some fashion. It could be a great thing to mention, even if it's not, it doesn't have any legally binding power, still, it's kind of a nice thing to be able to say. This is what they've suggested.
Right, any others? All right.
The only other thing we'll share is, as part of the conversation, you mentioned that they've been working on this for five or six years.
Yeah. It's been, it's been on the.
Yeah, they secured it on the back parcel, and then the front was in litigation. They're anticipating that resolving soon, and so this is what's propagating.
All right, thank you. Always good to have some context.
Yeah.
All right, um, uh, everybody's okay, we'll go on to the next one, number six, zoning recodification discussion and review of subdivision rules and regulations of narrative draft. So this has been in the works since, I, I don't know if it's two thousand eighteen, certainly before two thousand twenty one. So, uh, Scott Casa Grande and Dave Udi started working on this. Uh, there's a group of people that they've been working with. It's on the the recodification group. I'm now on that group. Um, and it's, there was a lull, it's picking back up. We have a December thirtieth deadline by which we have to provide answers to general codes so that everything, that they can wrap. I put together this great memo that exactly, um, and actually, hold on, let me second, let me ask you what you hear first.
I'm sorry, I was late. I didn't know if you talked about one twenty six Tremont Street.
Uh, we didn't, there was nobody here.
Yeah, that was me, but I rear-ended on twenty three on the way here.
Yeah, you know, if it's okay with everybody, can we go back to that?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, sure. Hi, uh, yes, so, uh, regarding ZBA, we're going back to agenda item number one, uh, regarding ZBA case twenty twenty five dash eleven, one twenty six Tremont Street. Would you like to give us some color?
Yes, so we plan to remove the building that's there.
Haven't we closed this and taken a vote?
We did not.
Okay.
Oh, wait.
Those are the only one. There were two.
But this is the one, this is the one we did.
I think for for sixty six Outer, Outer Booster, you voted to defer it to the ZBA. I don't, I don't think that was the slow.
It wasn't a vote, right? We just said that we needed more information on the application, right? Yes, because Emily said, yeah. So, yeah, Wayne, we didn't vote on it. Yeah, we we just, we noted that that we needed some additional information on the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, information, I can take care of it and get it, get it back to you?
Yeah, so ba- basically, the owner's email, email address and address.
Okay.
And I think it was the architects.
The architects.
Contact info as well. That will make life easier for.
Okay, so I can just email it to you then? Okay, and I'm good.
Yeah, did you want to ask us any questions?
No, I'm good.
Um, so do you, why don't you just, since you're here, why don't you just tell us about it? You said it's a property, you're planning to remove it.
Yes, and put in a new building that the first floor is going to be a bridal, um, bridal studio, and the second floor is going to be two apartments.
Okay.
Um, I know we have the plan. I don't know if you guys have seen the plan yet, Brandon.
Um.
There's probably something in the, in the fodder, but it might be just as simple.
Hope to see him.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and show us?
Yes.
Yeah, here, here's now.
Everybody's.
Fantastic, you got the parking, okay. Great, thanks.
Does this, do you decide to design more yet?
No.
Uh, this is right next to, it's right across the banks.
I think yes.
More or less across.
Yes.
So pretty close to the root pair.
Is that Oliver's?
Um, is it Oliver's?
I'm not sure.
Is that a little gray building?
Yeah, it used to be like a forest or something.
Yeah, Oliver's, okay.
Oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. Diagonally across from Sam's gas, right next to the banks.
Right there.
Okay.
Yeah. I would sort out, I got. Okay, so you have moved the building, you moved it over. Um.
And I think ordinarily, the zoning laws don't allow, you know, mixed use, like mixture of business and and multi-family, uh, business and residential, but there's like one little provision, I think, that allows like um, residential, it's above a, a commercial, this underground, I believe, which is what you're kind of, what's sort of allowing this, as I understand it at least.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, I think it's a, in some ways, it's a good thing, kind of talent to do a lot more. For what I think.
Full plans.
And that says rental. Forty B.
Um, probably not unless.
Unless it subsidizes.
Unless, yeah. First way to kind of, yeah, you know, plans to fill that, probably, the, I mean, to do units.
Yeah, I'll think.
Well, I think what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take this, I'm gonna hold this over here.
But I know this is slightly lighting, if that dark sky can fly in and, um, on a timer.
It will be.
That's a nice thing, it's good, yeah.
So the existing building is like here, right?
Yes, um, well.
So I probably should have opened up with this. So we, uh, we we can offer comments.
Yep.
That will go on.
And that's.
Right, and then one of our members, Wayne Dennison, is actually the chair of the ZBA.
Yep.
So, and he always appreciates input, so, um, he'll, they'll be the ones who will talk to you about setbacks and things like that.
Um, this is the one that needs a site planner, you too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, 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 that's what you said, yes, yeah.
It's in the, in the email, I'm saying.
Yeah, okay, so we're seeing ahead of schedule one. Okay, that's great.
Sorry, I'm.
No, that's all right.
So I guess, I mean, I guess, I guess officially, like Jim Wazlowski will be the one who kind of officially says this has to go for second interview, and he may already told you that, or can't.
No, I don't know.
But, um, but I'm pretty sure he will, because I think it, I think it certainly definitely does require second interview. But I guess it has to go for the ZBA for, I guess, because it's an existing non-conform uh, building and property, um, and probably because of maybe the setbacks and some other reasons as well, and use the ZBA's permission.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so then, will it stay, sit with us for a while till we get the site plan review, or would I go to Jim first?
Uh, I think it's really up to the applicant when, when they want to submit the application for second interview. Um, and they they might just feel, I guess, to you, it says, like, they might just want to wait. They might want to go through the process of the ZBA first and wait to see if the ZBA, you know, during the public hearing, if the ZBA actually, um, you know, grants the, what they requested, because if the ZBA doesn't, then there's kind of no point that you're going to apply to the planning board.
Okay.
Well, I I think, Wayne, wouldn't we provide the site plan review before it comes to ZBA? That's what we did with Bluefish.
Can be either.
Bluefish Tavern.
It can actually be either way, like, the applicant can decide which one they want to go to first. I mean, some applicants kind of do them simultaneously.
It's entirely up the applicant. Um, so the ZBA can't give authorization for site plan if there's a required site plan review. Um, you know, my sense of it is that if you ask Mr. Wazlowski, which is the best order to make it work, I would, I would actually accept his input on that, because Jim really knows what he's doing. So my, my sense of it is, you you can go to the ZBA first and, but if there's no site plan review, you, the most you're ever going to get is some sort of authorization that is contingent on site plan review.
That makes sense. All right, well, does anybody have any questions for that? Yeah?
No.
All right, well, thank you for bringing these.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, so why can't. Of course, sorry.
I, and we were rear-ended on Route three. All this talk about Route three, let's see, they go.
All right. Familiar as we've gotten to.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. So if you, uh, need help, you can call the, um, call the town and they'll get.
Thank you very much. Have a good day, Emily. Thank you.
Bye. All right, so go back to the, um, zoning recodification. And so, Nick, excuse me, the committee has made a lot of progress. Um, just to refresh, they've done an organization analysis, we've done an editorial legal analysis, and there's a preliminary draft. There are tons of work, just at the end, there are a couple, um, but here on page two, and our handout, there are two questions that have been asked. So there are probably, I don't know how many questions there were, Emily or Matthew, ninety original questions or sixteen. So we went, we, the board went through some, which is really helpful. Now that committee is going through them, but there were a couple that they wanted us for input. So if we could go look at number seven, if we could take a look at one and two and make a decision here today as to what the recommendation would be, that would be great. Um, so if you want to read over that, look and you can talk about that. I mean, when everybody spread number one. Or when you've read them both, are you ready to talk about number one? All right, very good. Okay, all right, number one, uh, any preference on the decision?
I would say delete, delete the wording I suggested. You don't have any problems.
I I I'm indifferent between the first two options, either deleting or replacing with pursuant to subdivision.
Yeah.
I agree with Steve, either one.
Yeah, I have your vote second.
Mark?
Indifferent, you know, first or second.
All right. Wayne, do you have a preference on number one, the decision?
No.
Um, I don't either. I'm indifferent between one and two. Um, so if you want to say pursuant to subdivision control.
I I would vote for number two.
Okay, all right, uh, I guess, so why don't we, um, go through number two, we can vote on them together. All right, number two, um, Matt, what are your thoughts for by, uh, for the two?
I just, the only part that I have trouble with is we don't have to pry a question or to see the question above regarding use of comprehensive master plan.
I know.
Do, what did we decide? So whatever we decided there, I think would be consistent. That's my only comment.
Um. Is there any way to give you that out of?
Uh, the term of art I'm familiar with is local comprehensive plan. It would be sufficient.
Well, I asked Emily to look at what we actually have online, and it's, it's a comprehensive plan, Duxbury master plan, and then Duxbury envision.
Invision.
Division Duxbury, thank you.
Yeah, I think the specific instance of what we have today is called vision Duxbury. That's like a marketing brand. But the term of art is local comprehensive plan. I think that's generic enough to fulfill the need.
But I don't think we use that one. What about Duxbury master plan? I think that's what I was leaning toward. I'd rather, I think I'd rather see just like master plans or generic, but I.
It's, should we change Duxbury master plan as amended?
The master is deprecated. Don't use master.
Oh.
I mean, Matt, I'm not, your, your domain, I'm just stepping on your toes here.
I think we still use the term master plan.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Maybe that's a new term, Duxbury politics.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's a term I've heard more.
Yeah, that's actually good for, I think, I feel that sounds more. What was the term that Rebecca used?
LCP.
Yeah, and I hadn't really seen it. All right, what are those? Uh, Duxbury comprehensive plan?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, either one would be fine, I think, yeah.
So strike the whole as amended, duly approved, successive comprehensive plan, or keep all that, too.
Let's just revise as follows, comprehensive plan.
Well, then just change the date to twenty nineteen.
Oh, I think we're trying to get away from dates. That's what we're trying to do.
So we're just striking nineteen ninety nine, and we're done.
Yeah.
Oh.
Just strike nineteen ninety nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I understand your point. Okay, all right. So is everybody comfortable with that one? Wayne, do you have any preference?
Boy. I do not.
Excellent. All right, um, do I have a motion to approve? Um, to, do we need to vote on this? Sorry, motion is just a discussion, right?
Kind of like, I've heard the changes I've discussed, if you have to do.
Okay, why don't we, okay. So why don't we have a motion to approve the changes as discussed and, uh, uh, general codes, two questions. Um, one regarding, we can do this, just maybe changes is, is discussed, and the change is being replaced, wording with pursuant to subdivision control law and uh, striking, the second question is striking nineteen ninety nine.
So. Second.
Any discussion? All right, I have to call for a roll call votes, um, starting with Wayne.
I. Wayne Dennison.
Lawrence, right, I.
I got your own.
Kristen, my five.
You can add Matthew Ray, I.
Alright, so now I hope you can see why it's taken so long, like going through. This is part of it, alright, so then on on the third page, um. What uh they've done, just to kind of repressions that we accepted a number of different, renumbered the regulations. Then we continued um some of the existing provisions, and then we changed, we changes in some of the previously adopted regulations. So there are a lot of phrases that were changed. And. And those are big thing. Um, I think that. Our council was trying to um. Trying to move to adding sections of the mass law instead of actually adding the text of the mass laws, that would just change automatically. Um, and those are the highlights, there were, there are a couple of other changes that we can talk about, but for right now, um. This is what we needed today. Does anybody have any questions about any of these? Just, alright, just to give you a highlight, so. Some of the other changes were that there were some definitions, like the definition of family has changed. So the group, the group is, um, it's very easy once you start going on this, like, how far do you go? And so the recodification committees really struggled, they went back to their charter and they were trying to figure it out. Or they they weren't struggling, they were trying to make sure that they were following the charge properly, so they went back and and looked at it and was tried to remember. Recod, just get everything back in order. Uh, move definitions around. Um, change a couple of things like the definition of family. Um, and then try to clean up some things, and there is a list for that, and when we get to that point, I'll share that with everybody. Any questions about that? Yeah, we've been trying to do weekly meetings to move this quickly, move this through. So that we could wrap up in September, so we could have a whole, you know, search and work on a public hearing. So ideally, this would actually get onto the warrant in December, so we could actually move this on to. Town meeting in the spring. Alright, and that's all I had to report on that, um. Next up, uh, planning department budget discussion.
Actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. This might be kind of a dumb question, but. I noticed that there are just the three fifty and the, it's the general code or chapter three fifty, the general code and the ten. So these rules. Rules and regulations for the subdivision of lands, basically the subdivision rules and regs, um. Are they part of the towns? The town bylaws and the town's general bylaws then? Cause that's just different from what. Way it isn't. It's not necessarily better or worse, it's just different from.
I don't have mine on me, so I can't double check.
I could ask um Jim or somebody else, or I can ask Kevin Russell, I guess, who just cares, it doesn't really matter, I guess.
Is it, uh, do you have that in your binder there?
It doesn't seem like it's in the town bylaws, or they call them the general bylaws. But I could be missing something.
I think they are.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't look like it.
This isn't a subdivision regulations then.
So what?
Did this come from the subdivision regulations then?
I mean, I guess maybe it's just an entirely separate. Thing, um, I just saw it being like this chapter three fifty, and I thought, well, that must be. Part of something, or maybe that's just a reference to master law or. Or some other.
Yeah, that that's what's needed in three fifty of the subdivision rights, which refers to mass general laws, chapter forty-one, section eating one. Uh, alright, next up, the planning budgets, planning department budget discussion. Matthew, would you like to run?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So I've had the uh. I've been in a few of these conversations with um. The finance director and some of the other people. Um, and I think the the memo, I don't know if you read the kind of the three-page. Memorandum is in there in your packets. Um. And then the the kind of the timelines on the fourth page, I think that explains it. Fairly thoroughly. Um, and so with with that in mind and. Um. With some discussions, I had some discussions with Rebecca. And other people to sort of try to put together a. A budget to show all of you, um. You know, to to actually kind of prepare it to be. The official budget that. That the planning department or the planning board is actually going to be submitting. Um, officially to the. I guess it's to the select board, um, as the, you know, as our proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Uh. And so on the last page there, it's kind of the the spreadsheet printed out is is that actual budget. If you look at the last two, uh. Most of it, of course, as you can see, like. From previous years. And then the last or near the end to the right side is. Uh, FY twenty-seven request. And that's kind of the core, it's kind of like the core budget. Uh, and then the the column just to the right of that, five B wishlist. Is um. Basically, it is kind of like a wishlist, um, as described in, again, in that memorandum from from the town. Uh, of kind of like things. That you wouldn't quite regard as kind of your core fundamental expenses that you can't do that. Kind of things you're you're hoping to ask for. Uh, that you want, that that you. You know, it could be things that you you think are important, that you wanna ask for. It could kind of be just things you wanna keep on people's radar, like even if you feel as though. It's gonna be difficult, given that the town's current. Budget situation is gonna be difficult to. To get these things for fiscal year twenty-seven, you wanna keep it on people's radar. So that someday, hopefully, with the next few years, maybe it does get approved. Um, so they're kind of different, that's what strategies, ways of thinking about these, but basically the um. Obviously, for the for the basic request for twenties, for fiscal year twenty-seven. That includes the salary for. For me and Emily, uh, and then. Everything else is kind of kind of little stuff, um, pretty much kind of. Continuing from years past, um. And then obviously the wishlist. Uh, the salaries for for the uh for an environmental planner. That I guess the board has 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 asked for in the past. And then kind of bump up on training and education. For a thousand dollars. And so the actual system, uh, you don't have to worry about this too much, but. The system that I have to use to actually enter all this stuff is is called ClearGov, it's one of these computer systems, um. For me, it's it's not too bad for me, since it's such a small department that will. Entering about a dozen items in each one, um. But then, um, you just put them in and eventually at some point I have to actually kind, I mean, I've already entered into ClearGov, but at some point I have to like. Click on the sort of officially submit button to actually officially submit it to the. To the select board, to the town government, uh, there's also a portion where. I have to like, or somebody probably me has to kind of write up. That kind of like write up some stuff, like explaining like what the planning board does and all this kind of stuff. I think that's due in early November, so we've got plenty of time for that, but at some point I'll write up a draft for that, I mean, I may just copy paste some of it from the the webpage. I'll write up a draft for that and and I'll be showing it to the planning board in the near future.
Alright, thank you. Well, thank you for working on this, I know it's been a learning curve, just here in your first month or two, learning how that how this all works here at Dexter.
Yeah, I feel like I've had to like learn half a dozen different kind of systems and. I've got about a at least half a dozen new. Uh, passwords and username. Yeah, it's kind of a bit of a nightmare of technology. Uh, but this, I mean, you know, I mean, ClearGov itself is. It's fairly, well, I wouldn't quite say intuitive, but it's it's not too bad, I guess.
Um, I have a couple of questions, so. Emily and Matthew, do you feel like the uh for the training and education, are there things that your courses or training that you're able to take advantage of?
Uh. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but there are always, um, you know, there's always kind of stuff out there. Uh, and of course, there are also things. For for all of you, I think there, you know, there's the whatever the CPTC or, you know, there are various these. Classes and stuff for planning board members, for zoning board members, which you guys, you know, if you guys chose to do that, I assume. This this funding could could apply to that as well. Uh, but yeah, there's probably. Different possibilities for me as well.
Emily, anything for you?
Um, I can think of something I've had. Something.
Alright, well, good, I'm watching, good at that, um. And I'm curious, there was a bump up in the mileage? Do either of you?
Yeah, so, oh yeah, I should have, I should have explained that, so for that, um, as part of my, I guess, basically kind of my salary offer. Uh, it includes, um. I think it's three hundred dollars a month. Uh, in uh basically for mileage, uh, I guess it's kind of a standard thing, I mean, the. The building commissioner and some of the other people who do a lot of trip, it's based for like. Um. You know, driving to visit sites, so obviously people like the building inspectors use it a lot. In my case, I mean, I guess here. I probably shouldn't say this in a public meeting, but in my case. It seems unlikely, I mean, unless the the nature of my job changes significantly, it seems unlikely that I'm gonna use much of it. Uh, I mean, cause it's it's not, it's not intended for commuting, it's only intended for. For trips to sites and work related, yeah. So it's just part of my salary, it's, I I probably, in all honesty, I probably won't use much of it at all, uh, and so that's why it's there.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions about the budget?
You know, I, we have, we have some zeros in prior years in twenty-three and twenty-four, I'm just wondering how we. Communicated with our telephones back then, uh. There there was a, uh, there's a caveat here that tells that some of the figures may be too low, so. Yeah, I'm sure the has to do with that more than anything else.
Yeah, I don't know if that's for, I I don't know if that's for like. Having like if if one of us had our own phone, perhaps, I know, I know a lot of, I I think some of the employees. Have their own work phones, you know, like a cell cellphone, obviously, I I don't have one so far. It's not, it's not my intention to ask for one, but it's possible. That at some point it may become necessary for my job, uh, so maybe that's what that's for, and I don't know, I mean, I could. I could look it up, I could actually look to see how much of that we've used in past. Fiscal year budgets.
I would say.
That's a small line item too.
I was wondering if it was actually they just divided up all the phone bills accordingly by department.
Hmm, that's possible, yeah.
It's the plane for um the planning director, um. Like their cellphone plan, if they use their. Phone for work related things, or if they got their own cell.
Oh, it is, it is for that, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Apparently they didn't print anything in twenty twenty-four either.
Yeah.
Uh, two things they do want to note at the bottom is that I suggested to Matthew that he adds, that we add um two hundred thousand dollars for this snug harbor project, and so capital. Budget underneath planning board and that, that'll go underneath uh in this different section. Um, and some of that is in order, that we have to put up money in order to get a matching grant.
Oh.
So it needs to come from somewhere, I said, well, I want you to start by putting putting it here. Um, and then the second thing was. When we go to move past your codification, we'll want to, I I think we'll probably want help with revising the the zoning bylaw, so I suggested that. I think put in twenty thousand dollars for consultants. Hopefully, we can get a grant, we got a grant for general code, but just in case, it's good to have that. Much building. Is there anything else that anybody can think of that we would want to keep, we would want to add?
Oh, okay.
Are any other projects that we think?
Projects are are the planning projects, the core planning projects we have. So it's almost every meeting, you have a six-year-old comprehensive plan that needs an update, you have a housing production plan which needs implementation. There are other plans that now benefit from having, which. We just haven't chosen to implement. Historic preservation plan, something else like, you know, a few years ago. So there's there's a lot, a a planning backlog. It's a pretty deep playing background.
Yes.
So we ought to have, I I in my vision. Uh, handle it, we have a list of the backlog items, what their magnitude is. Yeah, and that way we could. At least do some forward.
How about when we meet with the select board on September fifteenth, we ask Randy to provide. An update on implementation? I would give him, what's that, about three weeks? Um, could you ask him, and say that we'd like to, uh, one of the things we're gonna talk about is implementation, the table of implementation that he was having his staff work on, if he could provide, share with us a report, then that would be great. That might be too soon, he may not have it, but at least we'll, that'll help with the conversation.
So, I'm sorry, this is a. Implementation of the.
Envision Dexter.
Okay.
And.
So I've, so so kind of ask Randy. Uh. If his, if his staff has prepared.
He was tasked, my understanding is that he was tasked, that he's responsible for making sure that the town staff implement, all the different departments implement their portion of the plan. And we haven't had an update on where we are, so that would help us with our backlog to figure out what's outstanding, so I think that would be a step to help.
Where we are.
Yeah, I guess I could say. Two things, uh, two things to that. I mean, a lot of these, a lot of the master plans are are comprehensive plans, and so that get done for towns. You know, oftentimes they just kind of wind up sitting on the shelf, uh, I've actually kind of been impressed, I've only been here about a month, but actually I've been impressed about how many. People have kind of mentioned in various emails or conversations or various things like. You know, they've actually mentioned envisioned duck spray, they said, oh, this is, this is in the planner, there is this task that we have to do, or or we're trying to work on this task, it's this and that. Um. So I think, um, you know, people are aware of it, and it sounds as though a lot of people actually took it seriously and are looking to to do those tests. Um, but at the same time. You know, the reality being what it is, there's always sort of emergencies and and the urgency of what you have to do, you know, right here, right now, always takes. Takes pride, so, uh, you know, uh. I think with 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 all of these offices and departments. I'm sure it's been a struggle for them at times to to advance on them. And I guess that's something. For the planning board to think about. Uh, as far as when they do go before the select board of the fifteenth. You know, do they wanna kind of point to the entire plan and say, let's try to do all these tasks, or do you want? Kind of focus on a few and make those your top priorities, or how you wanna think about that?
Well, and I think, um, yeah, there's just all good questions, I think Chris was able to, he, Chris and Tag provided the table, and so that it sent to Randy, and then he was appointed by that where his staff was, what they had done. So they've done that, would help them prioritize what is going to be done, and there are some things that, you know, we said we need a new. Bridge or something, I'm just making up. That that would, of course, would be funding and support and so on, and so we recognize that not everything. It's going to be done by every department, but we want to get a status.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I can, um. I think I heard somebody say. I think this was in a different. In a different meeting. Being of someone at board. But somebody said there's like. Within the vision duck spray. Or at the end of the plan, there are like. Some like two hundred separate like tasks that are listed in all the different categories. So. It is, and some of them are probably kind of generic things, and others are maybe more precise and specific. Um, you know, I skipped the plan, I I admit, didn't read it all. And so. Yeah, it may just be a question of. Of of, yeah. When you talk to select board, which, but I can definitely, I'll definitely talk to Randy and try to get a sense of where. Where they are on on this, like, all those tasks and what the status is of all that, and like, which, you know, I mean, if you assign to different offices and departments, then. Which ones have gotten back to what have they reported and so forth, yeah.
Well, in tag, wasn't there a a table that was actually given to Randy? Do you know that?
Yeah, I mean, it was in the last planning board, I mean, we discussed this, it's, uh. I I took it through the process of converting from a document to a spreadsheet and. Making it into data so we can track it, and and so we should have a status on items that have either been completed or in progress or abandoned, attempted, historical commission had a couple of those, we took a shot at it, didn't work. Um, you know, so, um. It's really a triage exercise, in my view, at this point. Of just get a handle on where it is.
Yeah.
And then we gotta talk about. The reality today.
Right.
That that some of it, we talked about this last time.
Yeah.
Might be irrelevant, but we can't even identify that unless we know where we are. It's already been done, we shouldn't even talk about it.
We want him to give it back to us in the format, in that format, I think.
Yeah.
Coming out with a memo, what this is where we are, I think we want.
You know, beyond that, once you get a handle on the triage.
Yeah.
There's a hole, I mean, this is right into your. Uh, your wheelhouse of the project management aspect of it, you know, is there a way to take? Action items that are scattered across two boards and two departments, put that under the heading, but project and structure, so that people can actually collaborate even more, cause it's really fragmented. With regard to the budget, um, and Kristen, thanks for mentioning the. The capital. Portion of, cause I forgot to mention that. Uh. I believe the deadline. Uh, I believe the deadline to submit the operating budget, which is, again, those, uh, you know, the. The FY twenty-seven request and then the five B wishlist, it's September fifth to this fifth, which I think is for the next planning board meeting. So at least I think for that part of it, you may want to, to make the decision right now, um. Whether you want to, whether you want to use these figures that are prepared or if you want to change anything, and then as far as the, the operating portion. You can decide that now, too, if you want to wait a little longer on that one, you could.
Sir, Matthew, do you mind the operating portion, what am I missing?
That's the two, the two ones in the bottom, the, uh, the two hundred thousand dollars, the ten thousand dollars, I'm sorry, capital, I bought it, so the op, the op, the operating is. The operating is the most of it, and then the capital is just those last two.
Got it, I, I think it looks great.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to hear.
I can't think of anything else, I think we covered everything, so.
Alright.
Break up, break up with us, anybody else have any thoughts, I mean?
Well, I think so, do you want a motion to approve this?
Yeah.
Operating budget? And then we can discuss whether we want to also recommend a capital, or are we just going to defer on discussing capitals?
I guess it might be wise, even if you think it looks fine now, it might be wise to wait a little over the capital, the, the deadline for that is.
Is late, yeah.
In October, I think, yeah, so you know, like, it might come, well, it looks like Lauren had a comment, but also like something might come to you, you know. You know, tomorrow, just randomly, you know, you may think, oh, I want to add that, or.
Lauren, I think you got a question, do you have the actuals to date for right now, just to make sure that you're on track? The actuals to date.
You mean what we spent so far in fiscal year twenty-six?
Yes.
Um. I think they give us a report every month, so. I guess like, shoot, is there one for July?
Oh, a month and a half in.
They have got it right here.
I don't know the software, but we haven't spent much money, cause it's only been a month.
You want to see what twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-five, yeah, would it be possible to get fiscal year twenty twenty-five? I would expect there'd be.
You mean. Like to get how much we spent total in this year, twenty-five?
Yeah, just to compare it to what you're asking for.
I think, um. Yeah, I can. I might have it somewhere, buddy, I can try to, I can try to find it if I don't.
Has another question?
Is the capital request, are, are, were we supposed to be looking out into a five-year horizon? For the sheet here, it's a five-year, into your five-year capital request. Seems a little ambitious, uh, to know what's a capital request for the next five years going to be, or, or I don't know, is that an annual exercise where? You four packs out over the five years?
I think it's probably annual, it's my guess, is that a year from now, though, don't give us another.
Another five years?
Yeah. Actually, to, I'm sorry, to, to Lauren's comment, um. My sense is that, and I, again, I'm, I'm new to this, but my sense is that even if we, and I can certainly look to try to figure out what, what we spent in. This year twenty-five, but my sense is that even if some of the things we didn't spend that much. And some other ones that might have gone over, we still want to generally. Request the same amount, um, unless they tell us otherwise, I mean, if, if we went over, then we might request more. But for the most part, we don't want to like, so, so sure, cause there might be a reason, like for telephone, even if we haven't spent any of the telephone last year. There might be a good reason why it's there perhaps, and if, like, if we just take it away, then we may never get it back in the future, cause it's always hard to.
Alright, any other questions?
But I'll try to go ahead and I'll try to figure that out, because that'd be a good exercise, too, I, I think I might even have it right here already, so we're in my class.
It's all entertaining motions to do.
Oh, sorry, I was going to mention it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
I did, I should have thought sooner, so, um. There is, I guess, just a few sort of FYI things I was going to mention, so somebody, at, at the last planning board meeting, somebody had requested. That I talked with the assessor's office and tried to get a list of all the parcels that are. Uh, have like frontage of between two hundred and four hundred feet and, and a size of between like two and four acres roughly, I guess this was to try to figure out how many. Other properties in town are vulnerable to this kind of project that was done, that's being proposed on, um. Wa, uh, Waxworth Road, the, the little subdivision, so basically I talked to the, the assessor Scott Tumulti. And, uh, unfortunately, he can't, he has all the data for the sizes, but not for frontage, like that's just not within the data that he's got for all the different, different parcels in town. Cause it's not really calculated, he doesn't really have data, like how much of the length is all along like a way, you know, to track, so basically that, that can't be done. Unless you wanted to spend like maybe thirty hours looking at all the ones of a certain size, so unfortunately I can't help you, or we can't, the town can't help you with that. And then just, just kind of FYI, uh, up in Pembroke, I don't know if you know about the Pembroke, the, the project, the Pembroke Country Club, it's kind of a north, kind of the northwest corner of Pembroke, so it's sort of pretty far from Duck Spray. But just sort of an FYI, they're proposing, or they, 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 they're already, uh, been approved to vote about a hun, this huge project of about. One hundred seventy-seven single-family houses, actually, I think a few are multiple, but basically, a hundred seventy-seven residential units, most of which are single-family houses. Uh, they're gonna keep, they're gonna keep the golf course, but they're gonna kind of reconfigure it and put all these houses and stuff sort of into trying to within, um. And the tot, it's, it's going to be a total of about a hundred seventy-seven units, um, they're probably going to build it over the next few years, that they're going to start, they're, they're, they're planning to, I guess, start construction in the spring. So it's, I guess, certainly one of the biggest projects around here, um, but because it's in the other corner of Pembroke, it really may not have much effect on Duck Spray. And then, um, yeah, the, you, you, I guess you already know that the, the plan was going to be with the select board on September fifteenth. Um, and if you want to like, uh, have any sort of blurb or presentation or any sort of thing you want to submit to them. Uh, Nancy O'Connor requested you try to submit it to her by, by September tenth, like if you want to prepare a memorandum or anything to give them to explain what you're discussing within. And then just a clarification, as far as the M A P C delegate, um. The select board, I know we discussed it before, so the select board voted to elect me as the delegate to M A P C, uh, as the planning board agreed, and then. Uh, they actually, I guess they voted to elect Wayne, uh, or to elect Wayne to remain as the opposite delegate. Or they elected Wayne to be the opposite, I think they're under the impression Wayne already was the opposite delegate, so, and that's it.
Alright, thank you. And like, would, would you mind adding a planning director to the agenda? Oh, what, like a planning, uh, planning director or report?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, anything else, anyone?
Uh, do we need to vote on the budget?
Oh, yes, if you wanted to have a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the operating budget. Of.
Operating and capital budget. I think we're going to wait on the capital, we don't have, we have an October deadline on the. So, on the operating budget as presented.
Okay, a second.
I'll sign it.
Alright, uh, any discussion? No, I call for a roll call vote to approve the planning department budget or operating budget, uh, starting with Wayne.
Hello, Wayne.
Yeah, Lawrence, all right, I.
The governor, I.
Kristen, my five.
Steve, yeah, Matthew, right.
Alright, motion passed. Alright, thank you, anything else? Good to go, alright, I'll entertain the motion to.
So.
Any discussion? Call, call for another roll call vote, starting with Wayne. Go to Lauren.
Lauren, sorry, I.
The governor, I.
Kristen, my five.
Steve, yeah, Matthew, right.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it.